Six o'clock. We'll go ahead and open up the meeting. Thank you for coming tonight to the January 11th Clear Lake City Council Meeting. Clerk, please, can we have a roll call? Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Perdak?
Here.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Perdak, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. I'm going to go over it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please remain standing? Bob Myers, you're here from Calvary Chapel. Welcome.
Thank you. It's an honor. Just a simple prayer for wisdom and clarity. I'm very thankful for the city and the great job that it takes to keep it together. So, in Jesus Christ, I pray. Lord, thank you for the wisdom and the fortitude that we need for doing what we need by the populace of the city and for the council and for justice for all. In Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
You can put your words. Mr. Folsom, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to remove Consent Item Number Three from the agenda.
All right. We can get a motion to approve the changes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, to do the agenda, remove item number three and approve the agenda for the rest of the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Jones, any action from our closed session?
Mr. Mayor, there's no reportable action in closed session. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much. I'm going to walk up front for a presentation. There are certain things that we love about our city. Obviously, we love the scenery. We love the people here, but it's the activities that also happen in our city that bring us together. We all look forward to our Fourth of July parades, and another one that we always look forward to as well is our Christmas light parade that goes through to start off our holiday season here in our downtown. I want to make sure to thank the Christmas Parade Committee who puts this together because this is not a single man or woman that puts this together. This is, it takes a village. It says it takes a lot of hard work, takes weeks of preparation, and I know that I took part in the event and I really enjoyed what it is that we put together here for the city of Clear Lake. So for the Christmas Parade Committee, if you're here, please come up and stand next to me. I want to thank Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce Office Manager Jamie Yates, Code Enforcement Officer Tina Veramontes, Engineer Technician Adeline Brown, Code Enforcement Supervisor Lee Lambert, Police Support Services Technician Nikki Burrell, Code Enforcement Technician Chelsea Banks, Public Works Supervisor Mike Baker, Entrant Police Chief Tim Selly, and City Clerk Melissa Swanson. All of these people represent a facet of our community that works really hard to do something for more than just themselves. They do it for everybody here in this room. They do it for everybody in their community and whoever comes to visit us for this wonderful parade that we put together. As far as the city goes, our public works help set up the tree. They help set up all the barricades. They help set up with every part of the parade. Our Parks guys help make sure that everything is perfectly clean, and our VIPs, our volunteers in policing, also ensure the safety of our community with the barricades so that everybody can have a safe and fun celebration of our holiday season. Please stand up here, stay, don't leave yet, but thank you very much for every single one of you for what you do for us. Then, the list of Christmas Parade volunteers, we can't do this without volunteers either, not just the committee but all the others who want to see the city do well and do better. Number one is Clear Lake, and if you are part of this organization, please come up. Number one is Clear Lake Car Club, Lake Lawrence Car Club, Four Corners Hardware. And actually, let me get a little further. The first two, they helped organize and also had floats in the parade. Four Corners Hardware donated some lights. Denise and Pete Lustelow. They are Santa and Mrs. Claus. We'll keep that, we'll keep that right here. We'll keep it right here. Don't let the word slip. Lakeshore Lions Club for donating hot cocoa. Burrell's Automotive for helping organize. CC4C who cleaned up after the parade. Clear Lake VIPs for providing traffic and crowd control. Chuck and Vicki Leonard who helped organize and judged. John Jensen who helped film the event. If you want to stand in for your husband, you're more than welcome to. Beth Kaiman who helped film the event. Clear Lake Public Works, who's already up here, who helped organize and set up the lights. And I know that we are going to have Amanda Selly here soon, and unfortunately, she's running a little bit behind, but we already knew that. She let us know, but she helped organize, set up, and made the grand marshal sashes, and if it wasn't for her, I would have had no idea who the floats were because she gave me the list. I'm hopeful. There she is, just in time, making an entrance.
Come on up.
Come on up.
You're just announcing it. Your timing is impeccable. In the parade, there were float contests to see who would have the best float. The first place winner was Clear Lake Resort. The second place winner was Lower Lake Coffee and Cream, and third place winner was Fancy Paws. And also, we had a decoration contest on our Lakeshore Drive, and the winner, the most decorated on Lakeshore Drive, was Clear Lake Automotive. So, please, a round of applause for everybody who took part in. I'm going to give the microphone to Jamie Yates to tell us a little bit to...
Thank you, everybody, for all your help. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. This is what makes our city great. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to public comments. I already have one person that I know of that's going to come up and speak. So, Kay Lopez, you have three minutes, and thank you for being here tonight.
I'm trying to hurry. Of course, you know, I've been here in the past for animal control, and we have another problem. Two weeks prior to December 30th, a call was placed to Animal Control regarding starving dogs at a residence on 22nd Avenue and Irving. The reporting party was told an officer would be out, but no one came. People were willing to put time, effort, and money into saving the two dogs, but on December 30th, once again, the public had to step in, and on Christmas Day, one of the dog, and they stepped in on Christmas Day, one of the dogs died of starvation and neglect. A homeless woman grabbed the other dog and handed it to the rescuer, but it was too late. That dog died the next day. Who dropped the ball and why? The police department is on overload. We cannot continue to expect that they take on this huge responsibility. Clear Lake has grown, and the animal problem has grown, and we're dumping the whole load on the police department, which just, to me, is not fair. We need a decent shelter, which we don't have right now. We're in an auto repair shop. We need a professional staff who is actually trained in animal control and has certificates to show and be very careful not to hire somebody that's a friend or nepotism being allowed to go on. They need certificates. They need to show that they know animals. I checked the space next to the police department after we had met, and the problems that I see next door are drainage, noise, unloading in a safe zone, and because when you have to unload out here, you're going to have to do it out in front, and there's little escapees that will get away. But it would be good for adopting offices, cats, to be able to display what's up for adoption. That would be ideal, but not to unload and kennel a large amount of dogs. And so, when I met with you, Greg, you had said that you would consider moving dogs into a temporary shelter until something is permanent. When we met that day on January 4th, are we all on the same page with that? Because I don't want to go out and start trying to search places to be able to have a decent place for these dogs if I'm just going to be told no. And so, hopefully, we're still, that's still an option, to be able to find something for them now. They're in, they're in an auto repair shop that's freezing cold in the winter, hotter than hell in the summer, and we need to find something for them that we can do better than this. You know, this is not a third world country. So, that's what I'm looking forward to, and I hope that you're all in agreement to this. We've got to do something, and we can't keep dumping it on the police department. They're on overload as it is. And I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium.
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but I wanted to bring it to the council's attention. My name is Eileen Navarette. I live at 15416 Brannon. I keep getting these citations attached to my fence. They don't fit the description of my property. They fit the description of the property next door, but they don't fit the description of my house. It's not abandoned, there's not destroyed or partially constructed building, there's no accumulation and or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles. None of this exists on this property. I've been cleaning this property up for five years now, December 10th, May, five years, not cleaning it up but paying the taxes on it. It's an agreement that I have with the people that originally owned the property. The name of the person that's on top of this paper, he exists no more. He abandoned the property. Those records are on file at the Clear Lake Courthouse. He was also arrested off of that property for improper disposal of garbage. I paid $2,500 to have that garbage removed off of that property. I am not a squatter. I live on this piece of property under an agreement with the families that owned it to the sale to this guy, but he abandoned the property, and that's on record in Clear Lake Courthouse. But none of this fits the description of my property. The vehicles that I have on there are two vehicles that I own in a truck that I lent out to my niece. They are all insured, they are all running, they have road service, unlimited road service. I'm just trying to finish up a five-year deal on this piece of property. There's something going on up in our neighborhood. I found out today that two more of the houses sold today, and they've given these people 60 days to evacuate their homes because they sold to them. It's the water company's fine. I'd like to know what's going on up there that would cause such a terror on your life. We have not, we have 12 property owners up there. Nine of us have violations hanging on our fences. Two of them that should have violations have no violations. I can't figure out why this is going on. I'm in the process now of having this put over into my name. This is the five years, and it's being filed with the assessors office, and then it goes into my name. This is a legal thing that I'm doing, and I just would like to complete it. If the water company wants the property, when I finish this paperwork, they can talk to me. I was going to build my house.
And ma'am, your three minutes are up.
Okay.
If you want to stay, remain after the meeting to speak with us, you can, or you can contact Code Enforcement.
I would like to speak with you, so I'll stick around.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You just made a big difference.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment? All right, moving along to consent agenda. Is there an item that any council member wishes to pull? No? And item three has already been taken off the agenda. Is there an item that the public would like to pull from the consent agenda? Oh, and actually, I reneg on that. I would like to pull, I forgot to speak up. I would like to pull item number four, please. We want to take action on the other items.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the remainder of the consent agenda, except for items three and four.
I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Overton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Number four, I'm going to bring that over to Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, do you want to explain this one?
Sure.
So, in April, April and May, we put out a proposal for a contract with a real estate agent. We opened the bids, opening was on May 25th. We had, we had flown them papers and did all due diligence. We only had two, two applications that come in. Dave Hughes applied, Caldwell Banker applied. Unfortunately, Caldwell Banker was not compliant. He didn't have a complete package. We make, would like to award the contract to Dave Hughes, who was complaining. Unless you have any other questions, that's what we have.
Appreciate the information. Any questions for Mr. Herron in the council? And what I was looking for was that information that you just gave, which is the process that we went through in order to find Mr. Hughes. So I appreciate that. If we can get some action on that, I'd like to please.
Make a motion to approve item number four?
Second.
I have a motion and a second from Councilmember Bennett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Done. Moving on to business. Item number eight. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Chris Becknell, our Finance Director.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Back when Measure V was first passed, but prior to the initiation of receipt of funds for Measure V, the council authorized the hiring of five persons for Measure V in an effort to begin work on the roads in the city of Clear Lake. Over the time period, the city has started to receive the funds from Measure V, and we're now at a point where we have sufficient funds to warrant the hiring of additional persons for Measure V, and we are requesting the council to hire an additional four people for Measure V. Now, if you'll remember back in 2015, a presentation was made to the council about the number of persons that were required for a dirt road grading team, and the number was nine people, which included two flaggers, a grader operator, a dump truck operator, a loader operator, a roller operator, a water truck operator, and two support raking personnel. So, we're recommending that an additional four be hired, which would bring up the number of people to a complement of nine, which would be a full crew, which is the minimum required to safely handle grading in the city. Now, why this today versus at the mid-year budget review, which will be taking place in about a month? There's been a couple of things that have happened that have caused this. One of, one of them is that the initial five people who were to be hired for Measure V were a little slow to be hired because at the time, most jurisdictions in the state of California were, were hiring people to do roadwork. There was a massive effort to rehabilitate the road infrastructure in the state of California, and we were competing against a lot of other organizations. So that slowed down the hiring process. The next thing that happened fairly recently is we had the sulfur fire, and some of the people who were working on the Measure V crew and assisting to make it a nine-person crew were some temporary, temporary workers within the city. Temporary workers are limited to 960 hours per year. What happened with the sulfur fire is those workers were, they had to use up their hours much faster during the year than ordinarily they would because they were manning barricades and also involved in emergency work during the sulfur fire. The, the other interesting thing that happened during this process is that our Public Works Supervisor, Mike Baker, has determined that the four temporary workers we have hired are very qualified workers, and they're at the point where they are just about maxed out of the 960 hours, and we would like, they seem to be pretty eligible workers to be hired full-time, and we, we would like to be able to, to put them through the process and hire them through an internal recruitment process. That's, and, and we don't want to lose them to another jurisdiction, and if we waited another month to do that and then had to wait through the recruitment process, it is, is likely that we would lose these workers. And you don't, given the recruitment that's happening in, in the state of California for roadway workers, when you have an opportunity, you need to seize it, and that's why we're, we're coming to you today to do that. The way that we're asking that you approve the motion is to authorize the four positions, the specific range and category of the maintenance workers to be at the discretion of the city manager with, in consultation with the Public Works Director, because whether they need to be operators versus standard maintenance workers, there is, there are specific concerns about specific abilities, and there are different costs for different, different categories. So, the range of impact on these for Measure V, if you just did four basic maintenance worker, two, one-year cost of those is $192,000. That's an all-in cost. That's wages plus benefits. If you do three maintenance workers plus one senior maintenance worker, that cost would be like $212,000. Measure V is well-funded at this point. We have received a substantial amount. We're ready to ramp up our grading of the streets in, in the city, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the Public Works Director and the Public Works Supervisor are here answering specific questions you might have about the work that these workers would do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Becknell. Any questions to our staff from the council? Vice Mayor Harris?
There would be an assumption then that with the additional four, you give us the total of nine, and these nine are going to be specifically designated for road renovations, barring we have an emergency of some sort where they have to be pulled off for that, which we all understand, but aside from the floods and the fires and things we keep seeing, seeing you experience, we would assume then that these nine staff members would be committed wholeheartedly and full-fledged on a regular basis to operating solely for the purpose of road renovation?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That is correct, and it's, it's a real broad, it's a broad remark, so you're not just talking about grading roads or paving roads. You're talking about all, all maintenance on all roads in the city of Clear Lake, all infrastructure we have. And a lot of people are saying that we're supposed to be grading roads. We're not, that the people that are in Measure V will be doing the same thing that the people are getting paid out of the gas tax. Same, 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 same job. This is just a funny source where we now, with all these, with these additions, will give us five operators. I would like to hire one operator and three maintenance workers to run a grading operation, which you guys want us to do and which we need to do. We're going to have two dump, two dump trucks, which require two operators. You've got a loader, we need an operator. You've got a water truck that requires an operator. You've got a roller, which requires an operator, and a grader, which requires an operator. That's, that's six people, if they're one. And with additional temps, I mean, the maintenance workers, that would put us at five. So it would be five and five plus the three temps. That would give us a full crew. And then the additional crew that we have are ideally, we want to, to get the Public Works separate from parks. So with, with parks, we have three, two, two full-time and three temps. That gives five people that are dedicated to the parks. It takes a minimum of five people to keep these parks. When you guys ask for the parks to be cleaned up for an event, it takes a lot of people. If we pull, right now, if we, if you ask, or there's a recommendation to clean the park for an event, we've got to pull people off Public Works, off a bar project. That means we're shutting down the grading and whatever we're doing to accommodate. So if we split it, if we can hire these positions, then you've got a Public Works staff that works on roads solely, and then you'll have not quite enough for parks. You're getting there. We're getting close. That's something we can look at mid-year or possibly next fiscal year, add some additional positions in there.
Just to reiterate my concern, so what we're talking about today, though, is bolstering our staff for the specific purpose of road renovation in its entirety, and that is a broad spectrum, and I understand that to be a broad spectrum. I guess what I'm trying to focus on is that these, these individuals will be working on road renovation on a daily basis, and they won't be being pulled off. So that's, that's my biggest concern. I would personally like to see the Measure V funds. We were pretty, pretty lucky in the sense that we received the passage of Measure V, and then we've actually seen an increase in our economic development to the point where it's actually benefited us even more than we expected. So, to take full advantage of that benefit by moving forward with a vote like this, that's going to give us the opportunity to do everything the, the tax-paying citizens of our community have asked us to do, and that's to put as much effort as possible towards the roads. And, and I understand that a lot of things come up, and the cleaning and the different things for the parks and all of that sort of thing. I do understand that. But I guess what I'm stressing is that what I would personally like to see is to see it, a constant commitment to the roads in every capacity, and I understand that's, it's a broad spectrum, but regardless, as long as it's benefiting the roads and collectively raising our PCI, that's, that's my objective.
That's the goal.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on all that. Thank you.
Councilmember Overton?
I think my only question is, is so the people that we're looking to hire that are already working for us, they're all certified already in capacities that they need to be for the running the equipment?
Yes, that we do have some staff members, yes, that meet the qualifications. Not all of them, but there's, there's, there are ten positions that are qualified for the maintenance worker two position. I only talk about one, one operator position, and we've got a couple of people on staff that are, that are ready to make that transition, and then we've got other staff members that are in ten positions that are ready for the maintenance worker two position.
So, we're not paying for anybody to get their certification. It's like, we do the pass, and then they turn around and go someplace else because...
In order to take a, to fill an operator position, you have to have a Class A or R.
All right. That's all I wanted to, thank you.
Councilmember Bennett?
I have seen the...
I have seen the crew working up in the avenues. And I understand the need for the additional personnel. The avenue is a grading part. There's other areas in the city also, but mainly in the avenue. Now, the terrain is here, the grading is stopped, but there's other surface streets can be worked on. And I'm sure that they're being pointed in that direction. So, but like I say, I saw them working, they actually worked on the avenue where I live. They didn't do my part of the avenue. It's a rain shed. But they got the worst part, which is a downhill area. It was badly eroded. And they cleared it up, and it turned out near perfect. But they stopped right at my property. But that's okay. I didn't take it personal. They got the worst part done. So I look forward to seeing other areas, even in the inclement weather, being worked on.
I'd like to add to that, Nick. Just because it's raining doesn't mean we're not out there working on those dirt roads. We're continually going through our grinding pile. We're sifting through it, and we're getting to the consistency we want. What we don't do is take the grayers out there and disturb the soil.
Absolutely.
We do dump the loads out, and we spread it out with the backhoe, and then we roll it as well. We're not adding the thermosines because it gets oversaturated. But you know, we're continuing throughout the year. With the grading operation, it's continuing, continuous all year round. So our actual grading season, you know, we can't sit here and tell you that we're going to grade on specific days. Our grading season is June through October. That's your construction season. So we're, you know, we're going to hit it hardest during that time frame.
Anything else before I open it up to the public? Anybody from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I've been up there, I watched, and I think the nine are at the minimum for safety. I'm looking forward to a period of time when we might actually be able to increase that staffing level. But they're doing good work up there. And I'll be glad when they can get to some of the other roads in the city, and I'm sure a lot of our residents will as well. But I absolutely support this. I'm glad that Measure V is working out as we had hoped. Obviously, we had some setbacks with problems in the parks and vandalism and things that have taken place, injuries that have occurred, and you can't recruit when it's not safe and you've got people off work. So I know you guys have been doing the best you can, and I appreciate what Mr. Herron and what Mike's done. You guys are doing a great job. So fully in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Herron.
Thank you. About a couple meetings ago, maybe a few months ago, we had a review and summary of Measure V, what's been done so far and what was expected. And one of my concerns was that five was not enough. I brought that up, that I wasn't sure how we were going to hit all the miles of dirt roads that we have. And getting four more added with an operator is exactly what I was looking for to make me feel more comfortable that the voters would get what they actually voted for. I'm looking at the cost total, and Mr. Becknow, please stop me if I'm off, but I'm seeing that total with the five and the new four that we may approve tonight would be still less than $500,000, which is approximately what we were looking to spend in contract to get the grading done in the first place when we talked about Measure V. Now, those nine are doing more than just grading. They're cutting down trees to make sure the corners have good views. They're helping with the water flow when it's raining. They're helping clean up the gutters and the culverts when there's flooding going, prohibit flooding from happening. And so that kind of, we didn't have these nine a year ago. And so the changes that we will see with this, these nine, and still being below the cost that we had anticipated for the grading to cost us, I think that we're going to see some great changes because of that. So tonight, I'm absolutely in favor. And I'm looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the employment, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the employment of four additional maintenance workers for Measure V. The specific range of each maintenance worker at the discretion of the city manager and with consultation of the Public Works Director.
Second?
A motion in a second, but Councilmember Perdak. It feels very strange to say it that way. Can I please get a roll call?
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Perdak?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Harris, you may have a seat.
Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number nine, mayor appointments for 2018. Should I give that to you, Mr. Folsom, or does it bounce directly back to me?
Go ahead, thank you.
I was afraid you were going to say that. So for appointments tonight, we're looking at all the committees that we, as council members, vice mayor and mayor, take part of. It's a lot more than just sitting on these seats, and I appreciate everybody that makes it to all the meetings and brings back the information from the committees that they're a part of. Do I need to go over every single committee and name the members and alternates, or just the changes?
You can just make the changes.
All right. So if everything is going to stay as was in the past, because I've seen positive results with our positions that we've been holding, the only change that I am going to make is for the LAFCO committee, which I can't seem to find, but that's okay. That's why I haven't gotten all the way to the bottom yet. There it is. And I would like to change the member to be myself and the alternate to be Joyce Overton. And that is all. Any discussion or any remarks? Open it up to the public. Any public comments on the appointments? And bringing it back, and I think that's it for that item.
Make a motion to approve the mayor appointments as submitted.
Second? I have a motion in a second by Vice Mayor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Moving on to item number 10, consideration of appointment for council members as representatives to the League of California Cities Redwood Empire Division, Resolution Number 201802. Mr. Folsom?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe you're on roll.
All right. So we're looking to appoint tonight for the Redwood Empire League of Cities, and I lost my place, for representatives. And I am going to go with those who are already on the League of Cities, and I would like to appoint Councilmember Perdak and the alternate, Councilmember Overton. Any discussion or remarks on that? Open it up to the public. Any comments on that appointment? For those at the appointments, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council.
Make a motion to accept the appointments. That's correct.
Second?
I have a motion in a second by Councilmember Perdak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? None. Mr. Folsom, I don't see a report on that, but I'm sure you have a report for us.
I do. I'll take this one.
So it's been a fair, it's been pretty busy last couple of weeks, beginning of the
new year. Happy New Year today, by the way. We had a meeting, I had a meeting yesterday with Senator McGuire, where the county administrator, Carol Livingston, it was Senator Mike McGuire, Senator Bill Dodd, Assembly Member Agar Curry, and Assembly Member Jim Woods, representing the Lake County, Menzino County, Sonoma County, and Napa County. And then all the, each of the counties had a representative there, and the city of San Jose hasn't had one there. So we were talking about kind of the significant dollar impacts that have happened due to the sulfur fire, and what can the state do as far as potential financial benefit to us. There's some stuff currently that is in the governor's budget going forward, where they're going to backfill our lost property taxes. That's a huge dollar amount for us, thank goodness. Our bigger dollar impacts have to do with the infrastructure, with damage to the roads, the long-term damage there. And Davis Road, Lake Shore, San Joaquin, Arrowhead, all those. If you drive out to Arrowhead, San Joaquin, I mean, there's potholes all over the place that have just grown exponentially over the last few months. So that's really where our focus is. But the other counties have some other issues as well, so those are, those talks are ongoing. There was a senior-level member of the Brown administration at that meeting, and so she seemed to be paying careful attention to things that were being said. We're going to have ongoing conversations with those assembly members and senators and the governor's office to see if there will be future funding there. So we're cautiously optimistic. We had a couple of meetings with the Rotary with regard to a large donation that was made by PGE for an emergency generator for the community center. So we're making plans to move forward with putting that in, out there. Good news on the sulfur fire, great removal. We're right around 90% removal on that. We're going to have an update on the sulfur fire at the next meeting, and so Calloway has to be there, and hopefully we'll have some pretty good news at that meeting. Two nights ago, there was a regional transportation plan stakeholders meeting. Several of the council members were there, so I'll let you talk about more about that if you'd like. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the State Parks Grant Coordinator regarding our application for the Austin Waterfront Interpretive Trail. Very excited about that. They don't typically come out unless they're kind of excited about it, too. They wanted to really visualize what it is that we had planned for that. So we gave them a nice tour, and we're, again, cautiously optimistic that we'll be getting some funding for that project. Last night, I attended the Lake County Community Visioning Forum along with, again, several other council members. I'll let you talk more about that if you'd like. And we did have a swearing-in ceremony this week for Officer Kelly Batts, who is our, I put out a press release on that, but she's the youngest, according to interim chief Tim Selly, who's been here 22 years, as far as his memory goes. This is the youngest officer that we've hired. She's 20 years old, but apparently extremely mature, doing very well in the program. So we're very pleased to have that. I don't have a slide for you, but just wanted to let you know, we've got some, next regular council meeting is going to be January 25th. We know that. There's a special council meeting for February 1st, and then, again, a regular council meeting on February 8th. So plan accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll start down here. Councilmember Overton?
Okay. I'm sorry, I missed last week's meeting. So I wasn't here last week. We had a great Christmas dinner at the community center. I wanted to thank everybody that really came out and volunteered. We served well over 150 meals by the time it was all done, which I was very surprised that we served that many. But it was really a great place. The Church of Nazarene, really, their people came down and really helped out that day. So I really want to thank them for their efforts in getting that and helping us do that. I really don't have much more to report to them than in any meetings. And I was gone this past week, so I have, we're still in the process of cleaning up the community, but only from the fire. If anybody has any contact with, contact people, which I've been trying to reach, please have them come down, because I have lots of stuff with them for the, for them to come and pick up for the homeless camp. So, you know, lots of stuff still left over there that I have no place to take you to. So anybody has any ideas, please feel free to give me a follow-up. And that's it.
Thank you. And happy birthday, by the way. That's why you were gone. Councilmember Bennett?
I'm 24.
Yes, 24, yeah.
Happy New Year to everybody, if I haven't touched base with you. Last night, I did attend with other community members and a couple of council members, the city manager, Regional Transportation Planning Agency update, which was an open meeting. More people had attended. It was in reference to projects that are going on around our county and in the, and in our community. Very, very informative. There is a website on the Area Planning Commission that you can run up to update yourself with what's going on with county trends and what's going on in our community. That was not before last, not before last. Last night, I did not make the Lake County Services Priorities Meeting because I had another meeting with my bride up in Lakeport. However, it was brought to my attention that there was an item on the handout of the survey that they, the 2018 survey that they passed out, that they wanted the community members to fill out, that had an accuracy on there. And item number four said that to balance their budgets, the city of Clearlake and Lakeport recently raised their sales tax. They wanted to know if, should Lake County consider raising the sales tax? Our raising of sales tax has nothing to do with balancing our budget. Our budget is balanced. There was a mistake there, and if anybody was there or anybody who was viewing this on TV, our balance, our budget is balanced. Our Measure P, it was passed in 1995, I believe.
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. It goes to the police department. Budget was passed, not to budget, but to reinforce budget items for the police department. And more recently, our Measure V, which increased our sales tax, was not balancing our budget, but was to improve our roads. So if anybody was there or heard this, our budget is balanced. So just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett. And go down to the other side. Councilmember Perdak?
Thank you, sir. Well, I also attended the Lake ABC, Lake Transit meeting with Councilmember Bennett, both Tuesday evening and Wednesday morning. The only other thing I'd like to add is I'd like to commend our Public Works Director. One of the reasons we've been very successful in getting projects passed and grants approved is he's been right up in the forefront with projects ready to go. So when those items came up, we could submit them and get in ahead of the game, and I want to commend you for that. You've gotten a lot of extra money that I didn't think other cities have missed out on, even the county. So thank you, and I appreciate your effort. Attended a park study women's club with one of our code enforcement clerical staff, and had a very good meeting. They were very curious about what was going on with code enforcement, some of the city programs that we're currently working on. And I just want to thank Mr. Becknow for letting Ms. Banks attend with me. She did a great job and was very informative, answering the people's questions. And it's nice to have somebody who's working in that, in that department, there representing the city. And again, she did a great job doing that. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Harris?
Well, I also attended the ABC meeting. I couldn't sit at the table, obviously, because a few of us there. I was off on the side, though, taking notes, which was quite nice because we got to hear about a lot of the upcoming projects with the, with the transportation infrastructure around the county. So it's kind of nice to get a concept of what's coming down the pipeline. It's important to know. Attended the County, Lake County Community Vision meeting. That was pretty nice to be able to give some input, and I'm really glad that they reached out to our community to ask, you know, what could be done, what's most important to our community. I did go to the swearing-in of Kelly Batts. It's fantastic to see another young police officer step in and become part of our force. And I did meet with Lauren Freeman, who's operating the youth center now. And there's pretty exciting stuff going on over there right now. They're bringing, they're getting a, they're being awarded some grant. I guess it has to do with some combining children in the coaching process with some, you know, some older adults in the community and kind of building relationships. And they're going to be building a boxing ring. So it's going to be kind of nice for our community, that will actually have the only boxing ring in Lake County that I know of. And that'll actually potentially bring not just the boxing program here, but other people here to have maybe some boxing competitions here in our community. So that's something that's, you know, we need things for our youth, and that's one additional thing. And then the road grading process over the avenues is fantastic. Going and driving around and seeing the areas that have been graded, specifically areas where we have, like Councilmember Bennett had mentioned about the inclined surfaces. Specifically, inclined surfaces seem to rip away quite easily. And the way that they're going back with the products they're putting down and they're properly installing. they're putting down, and they're properly installing products so that they're very stable and solid, it's just going to be building on a real good future for our community, where we're going to have viable road surfaces. So I very much appreciate the efforts that are being made on the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. I-212, the Lake County Visioning Workshop. I do appreciate being given the opportunity to hear what the community thinks the county can do to be more efficient and better serve our communities. But I'm also, at the same time, saddened that as we are feeling like we're climbing up, that unfortunately, the county of Lake is feeling like they're going to be hurting and need to take cuts. They do have an email address. I hope I have the correct one. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's vision@lakecountyca.gov. And I hope that is the correct one. I'm looking at Elizabeth Larson to see if...
I can look it up really quick.
Or please email us. Yes, it is vision@lakecountyca.gov. Thank you very much. Please send in your suggestions on what you would like to see to be, so our county can be more efficient in their spending of money on services, or which services it is that you would prefer to see cut back, and which services you would prefer to see stay strong. It is an unfortunate situation, but again, I'm glad that we got to have a public input on that. I'm going to thank Vice Mayor Harris. He sat down with me with something that was rather difficult, but also something that I'm really proud of that we were able to do, and that was to help mediate a dispute so that a business can go ahead and continue operating in our city. And that was a success, and I'm really happy that we were able to do so. I was also at the swearing-in of Officer Callie Batts. Got to meet her, get to know a little bit of her personality. And I'm glad she has a sense of humor, especially going into this job, which is a difficult job that we place our police officers in. And we will definitely be here to support her, and we welcome her wholeheartedly. Thank you for that, Tim Selly. And that was one more. Oh, yeah, I've been fielding nothing but cannabis calls ever since January 1st. And so that's been also kind of a new thing. But we're getting through it, and we'll be seeing more as we move forward. And that is my report for tonight. Do we have any future agenda items that anybody would like to... Is there a redo? Is there a redo? Oh, there's a redo. Yes.
I have a future, man.
Oh, okay. I thought it was a redo.
I'm just reading my family.
Yes.
But it isn't a good...
Councilmember Perdak.
All right. I forewarned the city manager that I was going to do this. So one of the things that I've been looking at, and I had mentioned in meetings several months ago, League of Cities I had attended, set by the mayor of South Lake Tahoe. We really need to get a handle on our vacation rentals. Look at the TOT that could be generated. But also, there are impacts to neighborhoods and things. When people come up, they want to lift their hair down, and they can really disrupt the neighborhood, turning it into a party zone, if not monitored. So I would like to look at that. I did some quick research at two of the primary websites that offer that, VRBO and Airbnb. And I came up with 19, but I think it's more like about 24, 25, currently operating within the city limits of Clear Lake. And foreign ordinance that I think would work very well. I recommend we look at South Lake Tahoe. And if you guys wouldn't mind supporting that, I'd appreciate it.
That's funny that you brought that up because I was just looking at that this weekend to myself. So I think it's something we need to look at, too.
We do. And they have a very comprehensive, they've been doing vacation rentals in South Lake Tahoe for years. And they have specific punishments if your vacation rental becomes a nuisance. Kind of similar, I guess, parallel to what we've done with cannabis grows.